Today clean, I was, I was betting, straight down through.
Seven o'clock.
No dead bodies in the road or nothing.
So we'll call the October twenty first, two thousand twenty four, Williamson's Slight Board Budget Meeting in order. Scott called me, his mother's in the hospital, so he won't be here, but he has his packet with him, and if he sees something or has some questions, he's gonna call me on my phone and put it on speakerphone. First item to set the agenda, add to this. Let's see, guess a few more budget ideas.
I've got an updated, I gave you the general and I gave you an updated highway that shows the actuals for the current year they were in, along with last year's and with the pending budget.
So, so the general?
General.
Be added to this then?
No, I just gave it to you because we were gonna talk about the payroll budget and I plugged in the figures that we had discussed.
Okay, so you have it. You feel that we need to go into the second session for your contract?
No.
Do you need that? Anyone have anything to add or change in the budget, on the agenda?
No, I'm good with that.
Good. Okay, the motion to approve is written.
Make a motion.
Second it.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. Okay, next item is view of public comments. Is that laminated sheet out back? If anybody wants to look at it, see how the meetings are run. Any slate board announcements? Any public announcements?
I just wanna send our condolences to the Knight family. We lost Terry Knight on Saturday, and she was our longtime successor. Way up the town.
Yeah, she spent a lot of time helping people down. Okay, we go on to new business, water budget, first item. Thought I'd run through this, Jackie, can you explain it?
Sure, so it hasn't, it's only actually gone up a little over a thousand dollars. Electricity's gone up. Those, highly the ones that have gone up going down through. We added the wellhouse generator that was, was paid for with our, with our money, but we still have to budget for fuel and for the annual maintenance on the generator, so that line item was added. And then we reduced the Mountain View Reserve that was set up for the, the water tank project that is going to be done. It's being done this fall, so we were able to reduce that down to three thousand from the seventy-five hundred. So the budget's gone up about sixteen hundred dollars total, which under the current water rates were fine.
So the water rates are fine?
Water rates are fine.
Okay. I heard some talk they were going up. I heard some talk that they were gonna go up.
No, well, that'll be the sewer.
The sewer?
Well, it gets to sewer, but the water rates are fine.
I calculated, oh, is it the total revenue is point eight four percent? That's what it went up by, so less than a percent.
Those were the three major line items that were changed this end.
So, do you want to just approve these one by one? Rodney?
Is there a funding for waterline repairs or replacement?
We actually have a well major repair reserve, seventy-five hundred dollars a year, plus we have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for distribution mains, that's an annual budget. So that's for fish waterline issues, and there's one other one. Major, there's a major repair reserve and the, there's one other one, distribution mains and where is the other one? Just under general repairs, fifteen thousand, so we have thirty thousand dollars budgeted in the annual budget for that, and then we have the reserve that we put money into each year.
Our water lines are aging.
Yeah, what's the question, I guess, how much did we, how much have we spent this year?
This year, we spent, it was about fifteen thousand dollars.
One of the major breaks we had was caused by Greenmount Power drill through the line.
They reimbursed it for that one.
They paid for that, so.
They, they reimbursed, I, I billed them, but I reimbursed it a hundred percent for that one. So.
If you have to replace a line, water tank, something, that might happen.
If we have to replace a line, I think we probably have to do a bond vote on that, because we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Normally, the, the, the minor breaks that we've been, we've had are covered under those two line items, and we still have the reserve account that builds up each year that we don't, we haven't really touched for that, that section.
It could be.
That's for major, major repairs.
Right, if we did a major waterline upgrade like you talked about, it could be done within the water budget over, over a period of years, not, you know, try to pay for it all in one year. We'd have, maybe have to adjust at that time to whatever the payments would be on it per year, say if it's a twenty-year bond or whatever.
We only, plus we only have on the, on the water tank, we only have, I think there's only seven or eight years left on that, which we have the reserve for, so once that's paid off, we could take that money and put it into the major reserve to cover other expenses, so we would not actually increase the budget.
Does the whole town pay for the water thing?
Yes.
I believe so, yeah. I think so.
But we could, we could increase it at that, at that point. Just like the school pays fifteen thousand dollars a year and the town pays fifteen thousand dollars a year towards the sewer bond increase, that was an agreement we made with the, Chris Licarno made, that they would pay that in additional, addition to their usage, just like the town does, because we have the multiple buildings on it, so we pay that additional towards that bond, but we could transfer.
The water, water thing paid for by a bond?
No, I realize that, but we could increase that in the expenses into a reserve.
What I'm trying to get at is should the whole town have to pay for a water line?
Wow. Well, yeah, I mean, what are you gonna do, break, break it down between the people that actually live there and say, okay, this is your responsibility, seeing you have, hey, I'd rather drill a well, but it's happened to be my, my house is hooked up to it, so.
I think, you know, that's a road that we'll have to cross, when the time comes, I don't think we're anywhere near that situation yet, but maybe another ten, fifteen years or a bit. Well.
I like your argument Rodney, but if that was the case, why do all the people in town have to pay the school budget if they don't have kids in school?
That's, that's my next one, I don't have any kids in school.
I mean, I agree with you as far as that goes. Well, like, I'm not on the town water, it's a very damn, but I still pay the waters, the rates, I have our people in town.
So we're, we're putting seventy-five hundred dollars in here, we're, we're, we, we don't tap into that unless we absolutely have to, we have the thirty thousand dollars that covers the, the repairs.
And just so, I'm, cause I am a, I'm on the water line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it says cu- current water tax, is that taxed through the entire town, or is that just for water usage users?
Water usage.
Like the first line?
That's just the, that's the, that's just the users.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, well Rodney, I mean, I have no problem with that, doing that as, I mean, I know like other communities, like they have different fire districts, for example, like I'm thinking of Colchester, when Mounds Bay and Colchester Center had their, depending on where you were within the town, when it's a Colchester, you paid your water tax to Mounds Bay or Colchester based because that's who owned the fire hydrants essentially. I mean, I think it's an important thing that, and I, again, I'm not very first in waterline repair, but everything has a life cycle, so I think it's important for us to, and I know Alan Schweenard is very knowledgeable of our water line, you can tell wherever, apparently my house has three curb stops. I only use one, but he knows this water line, so as the age, I think that is appropriate to have it, and I think, as Rodney said, I think that it should be on the backs of the people that use the system. I have, as a water user, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, like I said, we're putting seventy-five hundred dollars a year into that reserve. And any repairs that we've had to deal with in the last few years have come out of the, the regular line items, because we have fifteen thousand in each line item for that, so we have thirty thousand dollars to cover the repairs.
There's another thought process that goes along with that. The people that live in the village area are essentially forced to be on the town water system, they can't have a drilled well.
Yeah.
You can't get the rates so high that way out of whack with somebody that has a, a diesel well, cost of going at. Same with the sewer, as far as septic systems goes, you know, what it costs to do that, and you pretty much have nothing, no expense on it. Once you get it initially installed, but, I mean, average water and sewer bill for a household's gonna be pushing a couple thousand or more a year. There's two bills of five hundred roughly.
It's, a fifty-four is right around five, six hundred dollars every six months.
On each one. So you look at it, over a couple thousand dollars a year, people are paying now for water and sewer. And the fire hydrants and stuff serve all the public buildings and are used if there's fires at other places in town, so you gotta be careful that you don't tip the scales too much one way or another. The way I look at it anyway, so. If time comes that we need to upgrade a major line, I think that'd be the time to bond it or whatever and see what percentage is paid by the voters, the whole town or the users, so it's fair with everybody. But I don't think we're anywhere near that point now. We're another, that, our system's about fifty years old. And it's have, it has some issues, but any, any like it's all failing everywhere. Yes.
So that, our, that COVID money that came from federal government, you've gotta use it within a certain amount of time.
Yes.
Water's not on there, but sewer's on there?
No, we're, no, we, we replaced South Main Street from the Pump and Pantry all the way down to the last user, we, we just replaced a water line down there that was galvanized, we replaced a galvanized line over on Rockaway Hill Road.
And they used up the tank though?
There's none left.
No, we, we've allocated it out, it's got allocated to your, the project up by your house, to fourteen, it's gonna take your place in the water and sewer line up through there.
So you spent every penny in the park?
It has to be allocated by December of twenty twenty-four and used by December of twenty twenty-six. And we've had it for going on, what, two years now, three years now that we've had the money, so we've gradually been allocating it to projects that need to be done in town.
What did the school do with it? They just, what do you think?
They had their own pile of.
They, yeah, that's separate from the, what the town was allocated, whatever they got.
I have no, I know, no idea what they did with it, but.
I think they put a lot of it into like HVAC upgrades and
Oh, HVAC.
One-time cost stuff, I think, I hope they did. I know the elementary just got a brand new, the entire HVAC system.
Yeah, and I know, I sat in a few school board meetings last year, the school budgets were somewhat contentious, and Chris Licarno basically said, don't spend, don't put the money in anything that's an ongoing cost.
Right.
So I know, whatever they did, it wasn't something like buying laptops for kids, for example, something that's gonna be continual cost for the rest of time or books. It was, I think it was infrastructure related. So that way the taxpayers aren't hit with it every.
Got it.
So back to the water. The thinking is that the whole town should share, and like some lines and stuff like that, at one point, the water and sewer money stop in from proprietor fund.
I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I don't have the answer to that question though. You got it, Rodney? Do you have any idea what the answer is?
Well, prior to fund is paid for by the users. Ship to that, onto the whole town.
See, that's, that's the way it is now with the water tank, instead of this whole town gears on it?
Well, no, you have another water line, of course, too.
I ain't sure just how that was, you know, before the war. It's an interesting question. I don't know. What the legal answer is to it, but. So. Does the other discussion, this kind of a motion on the proposed water budget, as Jackie has it prepared?
Make a motion to accept the water budget as written.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Okay. I'll let you just roll on, we're not checking, we'll go with it.
Okay, so the sewer budget, that has an increase of about eight thousand dollars. Twenty-five hundred dollars of it is the, the generator on Route sixty-four pump station. That's for maintenance and for fuel. We had to increase, the state permits have increased for the sewer department, so that one has another twenty-four hundred dollars, so that's been raised from sixteen hundred to four thousand. And then electricity has gone up, two thousand. So the budget, the current budget we're in right now is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents, and it's, um, the twenty-twenty-six budget is looking at two seventy-two, eight eighty-eight. For in, for increase for that.
So, that amount, what would that raise the sewer rates up to?
So, um, Adam and I sat down and went through all of the, the number of users on the sewer outside of Cogswell Street and Pleasant Street, because there's, there's property up there that's just on sewer and not on water. And then on Cogswell Street is a flat rate because we get charged from, um.
Berrytown?
Yeah, Berrytown for, for that, so we're looking at an increase of twenty-five cents per thousand gallons for water. We haven't increased the water budget in eight years.
Water or sewer?
I mean sewer, we haven't increased the, the usage rate on, per thousand gallons in about eight years. We've increased the base rate, we had to do that during COVID because people seemed to just love to just flush anything down the toilet, and we were burning out the motors at the pump stations, we burnt out four motors during COVID. And, you know, I put it out there, you can't flush this down, you can't flush this down, and they continued to flush. They, I hate the piper for doing what they did because we had to increase the, the base rate for the sewer.
So an average household, how much a year, is that twenty-five cent rep, is that worth it?
Um, it's, the average household uses anywhere from, I mean, twenty to thirty gallon, thirty thousand gallons every six months. And you're looking at twenty-five cents on a thousand gallons, thirty times.
It's gonna be forty dollars.
It's not very much. I think we're changing it to like fifty dollars a year. Increase.
Twenty-five percent.
Three thousand would be seventy-five, seventy, seventy-five dollars?
It's twenty-five cents. So it's twenty-five cents per thousand gallons, that's about twenty-five dollars.
Well, that, that shouldn't cripple anybody, I think. That shouldn't cripple anybody for you.
No, no, like I said, we haven't increased the water rates on, the sewer rates by the usage.
Anybody have any?
Oh.
No, for the year, so thirty, thirty-six bucks.
Any questions on that?
What?
Got it.
I use the sewer system as well.
I know.
Do you want to make the motion to set this?
I'll make the motion to accept, uh, sure, hold it for, um, as written.
Good, seconded. Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. What's that?
Twenty-five cent increase needs to be approved.
It was part of your proposal, no, yes?
No, that's separate.
Okay.
So.
So.
We need a motion to increase the sewer.
Great.
Twenty-five cents per thousand gallons.
Okay, I make the motion to increase the sewer rate twenty-five cents for a thousand gallons.
Second was made second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I know what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, by the way.
Increase.
Up here, do you just want me to go through the ones that have increased?
Yep, just going to answer, just going to answer the ones that are increased, if any questions, all right?
Yeah, there, there's increase.
Nothing but that, yeah, actually a couple did, I can tell you that. The, the only one that I did want to make, so, um, is down the nineteen ninety, John Gearbacko, uh, that one right now, the excavator. Why I, uh, we just didn't get that changed.
Should have to measure.
Nineteen ninety-eight John Gearbacko?
Yep, and that's the mini excavator. That, that's now the twenty, twenty-four John Gearbacko.
Numbers, numbers are the same for maintenance and stuff, twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we, we start back up at the top, um, and you go down through, stock supplies stayed the same, gravel pit maintenance stayed the same, winter salt stayed the same, calcium chloride stayed the same, property damage, snow plows, the same. We did increase the crushed ledge by ten thousand dollars. And then the rest of them all stayed the same until we get down to the second page.
No guardrails.
The guardrails went up.
Yep, guardrail went up.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
The last slate board meeting.
Right, you know why, right?
A lot of guardrails.
Yeah.
Someone's gonna flip up that one, even I can see that, at that tall bridge, I'm.
The roadside mowing went up a thousand dollars.
Any reason why, or?
We, it's the rental, rent the car.
Do we rent this, the mower, the whole?
The tractor and the mower.
Jackie did maintenance equipment go up? I didn't think the last, so.
Equipment maintenance?
Yep, no.
On this paper.
Uh, yeah, truck eleven went up, about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, no, that was, I was looking at.
Fifty thousand dollars last year, fifty thousand this year.
The item for maintenance equipment.
Equipment maintenance stayed the same.
Yep.
Um, everything else.
The truck eleven went up.
Yeah, and equipment rental, but that's not, to be, not expected.
Yeah, the rental went up fifteen hundred dollars.
And our road rehab re-bumped up.
Yeah. Road rehab reserve went up.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars. And then the rest of the increase is based on the, um, increasing the salaries by a dollar an hour.
What was the thought process behind bumping up the road rehab by fifty percent?
Well, my idea is that we're gonna say, try to get some of these roads, when we grade the roads, our grade base material, we need to get material on, and we need to rehab some of these roads that are getting too hard going, that need to be ditched and basically rebuilt. And that's where we're ending up pulling a lot of that money out for, to repair everything. Falls Bridge Road, to get it back up to where we can pave it, that will be out of that road rehab.
I was just curious, we're the ones that are gonna have to answer for this at town meeting, basically.
Yep, well, our roads have gone the wrong direction for many years, we need to step on the other direction. If we want to leave us alone, we actually might fail to get, um, some of them brought back to where they should be. When we did a road rehab, a road, that road grants, this year we picked a couple segments on, three segments on Chelsea Road, too. Ditching, stone lining the ditches, we had to take burns up when we, guardrails, when we did that, we had a pretty good view of what the guardrails looked like. And we started doing kind of a guardrail inventory, and that little bit that we raised the price of the guardrails, it's not even gonna be a drop in the bucket to what actually needs to be done, but we can take away at it. Right now, can you find anybody that will do the guardrails?
I know the ends of the guardrails are anchored on each end. If you could dig those anchors up, if you ever tried, you got two excavators, trying to lift up a section just to get it raised up. A lot of guardrails are still in fairly good shape, but they just need to be picked up.
Yeah, I'm hoping, like, I'm hoping that, like, down in the hall, Hall of Life, those guardrails aren't that old, they put them in when they put that new box covered in across there.
Yeah.
And did that, I'm hoping that we can stay like those and just pull them up, raise them up. Uh, and that's something that we can do, we probably don't have to hire the, hire it out.
Yeah, if you just, you know, with around the post of Jumpin' Jackson, knocks dirt back under them, so it'll drop back down.
Right, and, but there's some of them, uh, Baptist Street, like Cedar Swamp Road.
Right.
Those are not in good enough shape, so you're gonna be able to pull them, you're gonna have to replace them.
So other than the anchors, they're just driven in, they're just, you know, there's no reason you can't pull them up. You'd have to get, like, pick up section, maybe unbolt, like forty feet of it, just kind of work it. You'd have to get, like, pick up section, maybe unbolt, like, forty feet of it, just kind of work it. Well, I think you could lift them and re, reset the anchor.
And I'm hoping we can save as much of them as we can. We tried that on our crossroad, um, we tried to lift them, and they've been underground so long that all of it is twisted, then.
Well, it's worth a try where you can, if they're worth doing.
I mean, four thousand dollars is probably gonna go by it.
No, do you have any, uh, people on, uh, the road crew that are, uh, able to run, like, uh, the actual truck with the, with the hydraulics to run that and a hammer to reset guardrail fence and?
I don't think there's anybody that's ever done it, but I think it's not rocket science.
Oh, I know, I know, I've done it myself when I worked for the state, I'm just asking if there are anybody. And that's another option, there's a lot of road construction, I've been done with federal grants, and a lot of that stuff has been pulled in stockpile. I don't know what kind of relationship the towns have with the, with the, like, Derek Flynn and the state, Williams County State Drive, and the stockpiles of stuff. They, they've got just sitting out in the back, that's just gonna go to junk, and that's what a lot of it does, it goes right to the scrapyard.
We separated what we could, we saved all the posts that were straight that we think we could reuse. We've got a little stockpile over at Chalk, um, that we kept, the only thing we don't have is like rubbers, we'd have to purchase those.
Those you have to replace anyways, because the holes get bored out, so.
Um, and bolts and stuff would be the big thing, but we've got, we've got some stockpiled saved, um, that we went through when we did our, we halved off all our cup covers and shit that were metal. We pulled and separated them, there's some right out here beside the fence.
There, Roger's asking, okay.
I was up looking at that washout of Chelsea Road over the weekend there. I see where you guys cleaned out underneath the guardrails, pushed out, that's gonna be a big help as far as getting the water out the road.
And that was all part of that bad roads grant, and I actually borrowed, that's, that's a homemade, well, Norwood built that for Town Northfield, that pusher goes on forks, on the bucket loading.
Yeah.
And I borrowed it from Northfield, and I took all the measurements off it, we're gonna buy some steel and build our own. So we have one here, so when we get them in, we can do that. Because we did that on the Granville Road before they taped it, um, back three years ago, and it makes a huge difference letting the water get off the road. But the guardrails have to be up to, you know.
High enough to fuck under it?
Yeah.
Rodney?
I think down by Scott Castle, either Dade Road down, because every time you follow, they put more material in there, don't follow, it's just built up. I think you're, you're really looked at it, I think, I don't know, the tire drills have settled, let's inch the road.
Oh, no, the guardrail, I don't believe the guardrail has settled either, it's from Mills and Road, but it, it was getting so that when we tried to cut them off, we were actually getting into inch and a half stone, which is the base material of the road. And you can't lay that back out, so we had to put material in there because it's gone away over the years.
Not working.
Well, sorry, the boughs?
Yeah.
Oh, I just was up there today, they're beautiful.
Oh, yeah, great.
They're not? You really, you really complaining about that hill right now?
Well, you know, this is a week or so, if it gets rain, it'll be right back.
Oh, no, because water can't get off the road. I agree with you.
Well, it's worse than that.
But, I mean, all the boughs isn't gonna stop that problem, the rain's still gonna separate it here because it can't get off the road. We need to get the great water to the road.
Oh, I know, I think we need to help.
Yep.
Okay. Hey, keep going down the budget line?
Yep, so I mean, the rest, the rest of it, if you go down through the, um, the increase in salaries, hourly overtime, health insurance obviously has gone up, um, retirement has gone up, but that's based, the percentage is, um, the Evers is requiring the town and the employee pay has gone up. Um, and then the other ones, BICA and, um, has gone up. All of those reflect on what the, the dollar an hour rates for the road crews.
So overall, what's, what's the total increase for the budget from what it has been? I, I don't see the difference, it's a number that I'm trying to.
Thousand dollars from last year's.
That's because it's not, there's not a grand total on here, is what I'm saying, I just, of the increase.
Seven, seven point three percent of that.
Yeah.
That's a little over seven percent, seven quarter percent last year, everything.
I think that's, right. I calculated a seven point three nine, but I don't know if that's from, seven point two eight is what we've already spent. My only question is, the wage increase is that, is it a dollar net or is it a dollar gross?
It's a dollar an hour gross.
Gross, so after, so, so it's, the pay bump is actually more than a dollar when you factor in all of the?
The benefits.
Benefits.
Yeah.
What is the pay benefit with, like, what is the actual gross?
Total, the total benefit per employee is roughly about twenty percent.
Okay.
And that's, that includes unemployment workers off, BICA, um, health insurance, dental insurance.
Insurance is all increases that are really out of our hands.
Yeah.
Insurance loans about, about eighteen percent. Doesn't look too far to lie to me, I know, this stuff's gone up for buying materials and stuff. Motion on the highway budget?
Make the motion for the highway budget after. What does it mean to me?
Seconded. First, made seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess my, my only question, and I didn't get to do a lot of research, is, you know, obviously, everyone wants to make more money, and that's the biggest part, really, other than the, you know, I think retaining employees is a big deal today, right? I think we have a vacant position, is that accurate right now on the highway?
No, no, it's been filled.
We're, we're at that now, okay. Must've been holding on the web page, sorry.
Oh, compared to the other towns and cities around here, it's uh.
So I guess that's the biggest question. Are we competitive? Are we going over for wages? Like tap, maybe, maybe a better question would be similar sized towns.
We're, we're within the realm of where we should be compared to other towns our size.
Okay.
As far as what we're paying, well, we're paying for.
I mean, that's. It's really hard. Last year I went through when I called, think up, did my research and I figured out what all is around the town of paying employees. Their highway crew and the road foreman and whatnot. And it's hard because Northfield, Perry Town, Berlin are all union. So their fees you can't work with because they have union dues that they pay and so they're reaching more than, more than ours. They also have Brookfield and Chelsea. Brookfield has a similar sized crew. Um, they're they were last year a little bit more than what I asked for and got still. Uh, their road foreman was thirty, Ben Meyer, for ten years, so he had more experience than I did. So I didn't figure that that was, you know, but the benefits that the town has, you know, offset not having quite as much an hour, you know, for paying. Um, the fact that we don't have, we don't pay any health insurance premiums. Um, where some pay fifteen percent, some pay twenty percent towards their health insurance. But it was, we just tried to want, we kind of wanted to be in the, in the middle so that my guys can't say, Jesus Christ, I can I can go down the road fifteen minutes and make three dollars an hour more money than I'm making right now doing the same exact thing.
Yeah.
Um, because that's the only way you're gonna keep people.
And I agree with that. I just didn't know, again, I don't know the that's why I asked if it's net or gross because I will say the one thing probably Town Meeting Day is people are gonna say, did I make an extra dollar an hour this year? And I don't know the answer to that, obviously. I, I honestly don't know.
My wage is going up.
Um.
That don't really matter.
You know?
Cause minimum wage goes up, don't make my wage go down.
I know, I know.
Well, that, that, I think that's, and I don't want to discourage the budget. I'm just saying like that's, that's the reality because, you know, the, the town spending an extra fifty grand on the material for the roads, everyone benefits from that. Um, and you know, when I was a firefighter in Burlington and we were a union shop, but I feel like we got raises and it was really a raise. It was like a negative twenty-five percent because union dues and all the things that people don't realize will come out of your paycheck. When I actually retired, I was making more money. Or for a couple of months, then they give you the pay bump. But I just wanna make sure, my question is, as long as we're comparable to other towns, I agree with you, Dave. Because I'm assuming it's hard to get work, workers for you. And if we need, we need to maintain competitiveness. If, again, if someone go work for Berry Town or Chelsea or Berry City or whatever our surrounding communities are, we need to make sure that when it's five AM and there's three feet of snow on the ground, that the roads are getting plowed. And that's the highest cost in any budget. And I'm sure Rodney can say that for the state of Vermont, you know, any budget, I think the expensive part is the people. It's not the materials. Yeah, so I'm fine. I just wanna make sure we were prepared, competitive, I guess.
Well, dollar an hour on average, everybody's pays roughly about a three percent.
Yeah.
Which is about the rate of inflation, so.
Yeah, I, I calculated four point seven two percent net salary is hourly, doesn't change. But again, I don't know if that's just the straight dollar or I wasn't, then go down. And again, I know the state pushed things on, like the childcare, that's that's, I know, that's completely, that's out of our control.
A lot of it's mandated.
Bottom half of that last page is out of our control, so.
No, I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure we're competitive.
Yeah, I was just talking about the street, street pay they get is about three percent. So.
I think we're out of vote, right?
What's that?
I think credit voting aspect.
So all favor of the highway budget?
Aye.
Aye. Chris Epstein, obvious reasons.
Oh, yes. Can I understand that?
Okay. So you are going to general fund stuff to get now or?
I mean, no, I don't, next budget meeting I'll have the fire and the fast squads. They're not included in that and then I'll have it accurate.
Okay.
I just wanted you, I wanted you guys to have it as a reference.
Okay.
Because we were discussing the payroll. I put the dollar an hour in across the board for everybody, so it gives you um something to look at before the next meeting.
So the payroll budget is a straight dollar an hour.
Straight dollar an hour that I plugged in there um for a record. So when you look at the general, you look at the highway, that's what's included in there.
Now, we're talking about raising like listers up and stuff like that, so that's included.
So that's in the general.
It's in the general.
The general, um, the hourly for the listers was raised to twenty dollars an hour. Right now, their minimum wage. Um, and it's just.
Just can't get anybody who wants to do it for that little bit of money.
Can't say that blame them.
Open a door and say, can I come into your house?
And charge you more. Exactly, that's exactly what they do.
Yeah, they don't, you don't have to let them in.
No, but they can, they can make an educated guess of what you have. And then there, then, then comes the agreements.
You're better off to let them in, let them walk in.
Yeah.
I tell everybody that let them in.
Okay, so you're
Um.
Your payrolls are all included in the budgets we've already approved, so I'm good with that.
So my question just is, which, so I'm assuming the listeners don't receive benefits?
No, they're elected.
I know the town clerk does because that's, I read the personal policies.
That's part of the personnel.
Other policy. So what, what sections don't receive benefits? Like what, like the listeners don't, who else?
Select board, listers, cemetery commissioners, planning commission.
Okay.
Um, the only ones, um, the only ones that receive benefits in the town are the road crew.
Yep.
The town clerk.
Yeah.
Um, the staff assistant, myself. Um.
And assistant clerk, does she receive benefits?
No, she's part-time. Um, Jen does get EMERS because she's within that twenty, um, it's twenty-five or more hours a week. So she does get EMERS, but she doesn't get anything else.
Right.
So it's just, there's not that many that, that get benefits.
Right.
Yeah.
Good to know.
And it's always been that the planning commission, it was minimum wage, the chairman get a dollar more an hour. Same with the cemetery commissioner, the chair always got that. Um, they, you know, it's just so hard to get people that want to, to do it. And for the, and for the mandated, the state's mandates on the listers now, what they have to do. They really do deserve to get.
How's it? Go to work at Town Meeting Day when they vote to pay select board so much money and this listers all the other employees such minimum wage.
Well, we'll just have to word it.
Just change it. Take that right out of there, just leave it in the budget.
Take the listers out and, I mean, it's, it's in the line item of the budget, so it shows what, and it's part of the general fund. Um, so if there's any discussion, you can discuss it. Um, but I mean, like minimum wage is going up to fifteen bucks an hour, January first, believe.
Last I saw it was fourteen.
Oh, I thought it was going, I thought it was going to fifteen in, in January. Um.
I, I'm not, I'm agreeing with what we're talking about, but just trying to figure out. It's always been like voted on it.
We need to. Right.
Change that so it's in the budget versus that.
People don't, yeah, we just have to reword the, the article.
So all that stuff will be gone over next cycle with the general fund.
Yeah.
So the next item is the town manager's contract. Um, Jackie's told me that she's good with the contract. Nothing's changed in it from the past. And she's good with the dollar an hour raise that everybody else is getting. Am I correct? So that's the only changes. She, she will just make a dollar an hour more, just like everyone else is.
Right.
So, anybody wanna make a motion on that?
Is that a three-year contract guarantee? Does she tries to back out of it, she gets falling like a million dollars?
How many years was it?
Ninety days notice. I wanna get out of my mind.
That, that's right, I know.
I think it works both ways.
It does. We've got ninety days to figure out how to keep it. Hogtied?
Sure, I wish you weren't gonna lose.
Anyways, anyways.
Are we just discussing the pay bump at this point? Cause the contract isn't due for.
The contract is always renegotiated in the fall because of the budget and signed by the, by the select board at that time.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we're.
Which I actually brought the updated one. Um.
You had a copy, but that was a bureau.
This is the old version.
Yeah, this is the old one with, with the updated parts on the back.
Don't, I, I concluded the, the amendment is in this contract right here.
Right.
No, I know what you're doing. I know what you're doing. I'll keep Jackie's contract right on the top page of my stack.
She goes real far forward.
That's right, that way I can quick, quick retrieval. One of these days I'm gonna get rid of all that stuff. I've got, well, going on four years worth stacks of every single one of these. I've got entire file capital, everyone with mental. And I've got the outside data, so I can go back and look.
I had nine years of it. I kept it in boxes. Get rid of it. Get rid of it back again.
Well, it, it is that way. I do. I go back and research when people ask questions. Matter of fact, this month right here, this year, here it is.
I had twenty-six years of visual play, I was in the boxes.
That's a little much.
Um, that's, that's.
Another big bonfire one of these days.
Yeah, and when we, when they do the general budget.
You all set, Tyler?
Uh, just.
He's still, he's still probably.
So it just says the annual salary of the employee should be the percentage increase. So uh, based on everybody else.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're saying a dollar, but that's a percentage essentially.
Yeah.
Same as everybody else, good.
Just to make sure that she doesn't get a million dollars if we.
No, she's gotta pay us a million dollars if she's dying.
Was that, was that, is that the way it is?
Yeah.
I feel like the employee usually gets the. There are rumors you're only doing another year, so I'm surprised by the three-year contract.
Rumors lie.
Okay, you still wanna make a motion?
I'm not that old yet, Tyler.
Retired life, you get busy, trust me. I didn't plan on being retired at thirty-six.
We got two more years, are you ready? I mean, two more years.
Yeah. Feelings mutual. There's a lot of them to get the same time right, Bart.
Right.
Let's go make the motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to accept the town manager's contract as written for, I believe it said August twenty-eighth, or what state, August twenty-first? Or October, what month?
October twenty-first.
Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, correct? Is that the date there?
Yeah.
Wait, second? I was made second. Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Locked and loaded. Okay.
The old business round table, Tyler, visit. Clayton?
Good.
I'll just maybe one question, do we want to start next? Are we planning the next?
We don't plan one today.
So before we adjourn, do you wanna have that?
Um, do you wanna do the last Monday in November or might be the first?
What day is that? I mean, what's the actual date?
Twenty-fifth is the last Monday in November.
That's.
So that's Thanksgiving week then.
Yeah, that's Thanksgiving. That's not gonna work well.
So that's not a good week.
I'll be, I'll be in Indiana.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, I thought there was some, I thought there was a Monday after that, so that's just a dumb.
How quick can you get the other stuff together? Will you have the other stuff together, the rest of it?
As soon as I get, I talked to William and Marie um today. Marie's working on the fast squad and William's working on the, the fire departments, but.
Those, those are the only two that we have to work on, right? That left, cause the rest of everything.
Everything else, everything else is in there.
Okay, I thought so, but. But. The cemetery?
Cemetery, those separate articles.
That, that, okay, that, yeah, that, yeah, nevermind, nevermind.
Libraries, separate articles, so those just skip.
As soon as I said that, I went, nevermind.
Yeah.
Let me see what my calendar has to say here.
Hopefully you don't hear anything from the library.
Um, unless we do it the first Monday, no, that's the fourth, is that, the night before elections. Be the fourth, then the eleventh is our regular meeting. And then the eighteenth of November.
That's ridiculous, right?
That's too soon.
Yeah, very much.
How about the fourth? Is, is that a problem, do it the night before election?
Do it early.
Can we do it at six? Can you do six sound good?
It'll be darker.
Election day?
No, the night, the night before Monday.
Night before?
Time, time changes on the third, so it'll be darker, harder earlier, so.
That's right, yeah, time changes time.
Yeah, I'll just make it happen. That's all there is to it. I mean.
Actually, I'm good, yeah.
That's my little, that's my little Chinese.
So November, November fourth at six o'clock.
November fourth at six.
That'll be the last one we need, yeah?
Should be.
I'm gonna be recusing.
November fourth at what time is you?
Six o'clock.
Okay. Just double checking. Yeah.
Okay. That's all taken care of. Uh, any motion to adjourn? Seconded? Everybody seconded?
Seconded. I'm holding seconded, everybody, everything tonight.
I'm reading my Robert's paper.
Well, I don't work, the, the tool is, it's seconded everything tonight. I don't care, but either. Yeah, you have to remind me on the November fourth, but.
Yeah, me too.